Well, good evening and welcome to the Tempe City Council Meeting for April 25th, 2019 here in the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. For all of us that are able, could you please rise and join us for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, unregime, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on our agenda is our meeting minutes. Vice Mayor Cubey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve meeting minutes 3A, 1 through 2.
It's been moved, items 3A, 1 through 2, seconded by Councilmember Keating. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does pass. Vice Mayor Cubey.
Move to approve meeting minutes 3B, 1 through 14.
Second.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Cubey, seconded by Councilmember Adams. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does pass. Next item is reports and announcements. I have a couple announcements. I'm going to head down to the podium. All right. Ms. Ward, can you come up, please? And you can bring your family as well. We have another outstanding compassionate Tempe resident to recognize tonight, Mr. Ford, as you might be able to tell, is in great shape. Let me look at Mr. Ford. He recently completed what they call the Boston Quad. And for the folks in the audience or watching at home, the Boston Quads is a warm-up that would make me crawl. But before I give you too much away, let's watch this video of Henry.
Running has given me a voice to share my story and it also encourage running as part of the recovery process from addiction and alcoholism. I got into recovery because my life was spiraling downwards. I was reckless. My health was deteriorating. I found myself in urgent care five times with gastritis. My marriage was dwindling. My work wasn't going well. Every aspect of my life was kind of suffering. I knew that I had a problem deep down inside and it was just only a matter of time before I gained the strength to actually get the help, to seek help. I started running to kind of help my recovery process. When I run or exercise, it kind of helps the day flow better. So when I started running, I always wanted to push myself. If I said I was going to run eight miles, I'd go ahead and run 10. And so in my head, I'm like, I want to run a marathon. So I ran my first half marathon in October, my first year running, six months running. And as soon as I ran that marathon, I was hooked. I didn't know what else. I didn't know there was anything beyond the traditional 26.2. Before I knew it, I had signed up for my first ultra marathon. I did the Mesa Phoenix Marathon four times. And then I did my first Boston Quad event. Yeah, it was like an 80-mile warm-up because I had to start at the finish line, go to the starting line, come back to the finish line, go to the starter line. And the fourth marathon was the actual marathon. It was one of the greatest days of my life. I thought it was a huge accomplishment. It started something bigger than I ever imagined. So I decided to sign up for a foundation, a nonprofit organization called RunWell. Basically, they do running groups to, they also encourage running as part of the recovery process from addiction and alcoholism. And all the money that they raise, or anybody raises for RunWell, goes directly to treatment centers. Treatment's expensive, so people that can't necessarily afford treatment will be given kind of like a scholarship to get help. And getting help and getting a treatment is ultimately saving their life. If you see somebody struggling, help them, encourage them to get treatment. And when you do that, sometimes you might find also that it's people just like you. I've been in recovery for a little over 10 years now. I'm proud of myself for being able to do it. I'm lucky, I'm humbled, I'm lucky to be able to do what I do. Running is a good way of keeping me sober because it's helped me physically, mentally. I have more energy. I just feel alive when I'm running.
Well, thank you, Henry, for being a true example of a Tempean. It's individuals like you that helps make Tempe unique. Please keep doing what you're doing by making waves at Kiwanis Park or in Boston or wherever you are when the next race takes you. With that, I'm going to have a little proclamation I'd like to read for you where it states, "Whereas, resident Henry Ward is an outstanding athlete representing the city of Tempe on a national level. And whereas, Henry Ward has run thousands of miles and raised thousands of dollars to help individuals overcome addiction through RunWell. And whereas, Henry Ward has helped other people recover from addiction through fitness and counseling. Whereas, Henry Ward ran the Boston Marathon, one of the world's toughest marathons, four times in a row this month. He finished 104.8 miles faster than many people who ran the 26.2-mile marathon only once, raising both awareness for his cause and money for his charity." Now therefore, I, Mark Mitchell, Mayor of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare as April 25th, 2019, the Ultra Marathoner Henry Ward Day in Tempe, Arizona. Congratulations. Next, could Annabelle Abiman, could she please come down? Annabelle, we want to take this time to recognize you for, first of all, has anyone ever eaten at Cappi La La Bella?
Yeah.
I mean, come on, look at this. You know, Cappi La La Bella is right off of University Drive. Well, Annabelle is the general manager for this great Ethiopian restaurant. And Annabelle can also claim the title of the founder and executive director of the African Fest here in Tempe. African Fest had its inaugural event at the end of March. As I read the proclamation, you'll be able to see what great event this is for Tempe and the region by creating a safe and welcoming space to experience culture and art in the form of clothes, food, storytelling. With that being said, I'd like to read a proclamation where it states, "Whereas, the city of Tempe is proud to honor the African Fest USA for its mission is to showcase the culture, achievements, and talents, music, food, fashion, and story of Africans and Africa. And whereas, the first annual African Fest USA was organized by a group of independent professionals who wanted to advance African culture and had a vision of creating a cultural event to celebrate diversity and the richness of talent found in the African continent. And whereas, the event organizers identify as storytellers, look to share their identities and cultures of the people of Africa because they are unique stories yet to be told on a global stage. African Fest USA invites artists and other professionals to share their artistry by creating a story in motion told through food, entertainment, and seminar and trainings. And every single bit of music, food, and story shared is intended to do as a cultural exchange and educational experience to all Arizonans. And whereas, the support from the city of Tempe and the Tempe Center for the arts, Cappi La La Bella, Ethiopian cuisine, Chapman Automotive Group, Ethiopian Airlines, and others, the inaugural festival was held at the Kiwanis Park on March 30th, 2019. And we, as a city, hope that the festival will continue for many years to come." Now therefore, I, Mark Mitchell, Mayor of the city of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare as March 30th, 2019, as African Fest USA Day in Tempe, Arizona. Thank you. Congratulations. Mr. City Manager, do you have any announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I just have one. I've had the distinct honor and pleasure of sitting next to the individual on my left here, Brigida Kuiper, since 2010, when she served as city clerk. We have all had, I think, the great honor and privilege of working with Brigida. She is a consummate professional as a city clerk. She is top of her profession, and we have all benefited from having her as part of the city of Tempe. On top of all of that, she's just an outstanding human being, just a person who is very kind and very generous with her time and truly cares about this community in ways that go far beyond just being a great city clerk. So she's retiring, I believe, her last day is tomorrow. So I know that the mayor and council are going to say something, but since this is my opportunity, I just want to say thank you for, you know, on behalf of the organization of Tempe and all the employees here who have had the opportunity to work with you. You will be missed, but we are fortunate that sitting to your left is our new city clerk, Carla Reese, who I want to welcome as well to the city of Tempe. She's also great, and we really look forward to working with her as well. So thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda, all the items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the city council unless the item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated by an asterisk, and council members may remove items for separate consideration. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker's card, which can be found in the back of the council chambers, and please turn it to the front of our room, and we'll call your name when it is your turn to comment. Miscellaneous items, the next item is the consent agenda, miscellaneous items 5A1 through 5A8, with the exception of 5A6, which has been removed and deleted from the agenda at the request of the applicant, and items 5A7 and 5A8, which are being pulled for separate consideration. Is there a motion on items 5A1 through 5A8 with the stipulations, with the exception of 5A7 and 5A, or 5A6 and 5A7 and 5A8 are being pulled for separate consideration? It's been moved by Vice Mayor Cubey. Second, yes?
Mayor, can I clarify? It's the entire miscellaneous items, awards of contracts and resolutions, please, with the exception of those three items that you mentioned.
Oh, I was doing one at a time, sorry. Awards and awards of bids and contracts with items 5B1 through 5B9, and resolutions, items 5C1 through 5C3. The consent agenda is 5A1 through 5A8, with the exception of 5A6, which has been removed. 5A7 and 5A8 have been pulled, and all the items of the bids and awards of contracts, items 5B1 through 5B9, as well as resolutions, items 5C1 to 5C3. I'm just checking Brigida's, your last meeting, make sure you're.
I'm paying attention.[794.38][794.38](Laughter).
The consent agenda is removed by Vice Mayor Cubey, seconded by Councilmember Adams. Please vote. That motion carries 6 to 0. Next item is is our non-consent agenda.
Mayor, 5A7?
Oh, I forgot about that.
And 5A8? Thank you.
I'm just checking, making sure you're taking, making sure that we're on top of this. Next item that is pulled is items 5A7. It has been pulled, and I know we have our staff coming up. Microphone.
Mayor and council, my name is Bruce Smith. I'm the licensing supervisor in the Internal Services Department. I submitted the request for council actions that are recommending a denial on the two liquor licenses that were previously submitted. With me is Anna Curran, who is the licensing specialist in the police department. I'm going to turn the time over to her to explain the events that happened.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Anna Churn. I am the licensing specialist for Tempe Police Department. One of my main responsibilities is to process all incoming liquor and specialty licenses for the city of Tempe. I work closely with the Arizona Department of Liquor to ensure that businesses and licensees are adhering to Title IV liquor law. Our goal is to process the license in a timely manner, provide a successful outcome for the businesses and the licensees, and at the same time, ensure public safety and adherence to Title IV. I can provide you guys an overview of my, of the facts of my investigation over the last two months if that's needed.
Thank you. Can you give us a summary? And then I do, since we did pull it, I'm going to have the applicant come up as well.
Sure.
You want to hear from the applicant, and then we'll do a summary? Okay. So could, John Egan, could you come forward, please? As well as Jason?
I'm Jason Grossmuller. I'm the owner of Arizona Distilling Company. We, we're here to just basically talk about the license being denied, basically argue what the letter states here, which is probably going to be her summary. So we'd like to argue some of the points here that are incorrect at best.
Okay.
So I don't know if she wants to do her summary first and then have us point out everything, or just have us cut to the chase and.
All right. Can you go ahead and read the summary? Give us a brief summary, synopsis?
Okay. Just to correct you guys, we aren't, we aren't, your liquor license has not been denied. City of Tempe was just recommending denial based on the following reasons that I'll discuss. So you aren't, you have not been denied yet. That's at a higher level with the Department of Liquor and a liquor board hearing.
Right. And it's our understanding, if I may for a second, that you, here at the city, operate under basically the influence of the Department of Liquor license control or what they recommend. So I don't know who Mr. Chesterfield is who sent this letter, and I don't know if this is what your summary is going to be based off of, but most of this information is incorrect at best, like I said. For example, the fact that they state that I am a member of the LLC in ownership is 100% incorrect. I think that might be the genesis of this, and I don't know. But if that letter from Mr. Chesterfield is going to be your summary, is it?
I'm assuming so. I'm not sure. Sorry, I can't speak to that.
Okay.
But let me go ahead and provide the summary, and then you guys can speak to that. There's four main reasons that I'm recommending denial. An undisclosed controlling person or owner, and that would be what Jonathan was referring to, Mr. Egan. The owner and applicant being able, unable to demonstrate adherence to ARS 4-203A and 4-210A2, which is the statute requiring the satisfactory showing of the capability, qualifications, and reliability to have a liquor license. And then they're also applying for a Series 12 restaurant liquor license as well, which would be new for them. There's insufficient, basically, kitchen infrastructure and the menu to support the 40% revenue they would have to adhere to. DLLC has similar concerns about the qualifications of the licensee. And I can provide further details. Again, that's just a summary.
Right. Again, that's based on me being a member of the LLC, which is not correct. So I feel like the whole cornerstone of this conversation is.
There was a mistake by the Arizona Corporation Commission.
Yeah.
That was corrected. He was listed as a member, but he is a manager.
Never been a member. How that happened with the ACC, we have no idea. In conversations with our liquor attorney and our business attorney, they've told us this is not uncommon with the ACC. And we also believe it might be a small overreach on behalf of the agent with the DLLC who we spoke with on the phone that day. We also stand that, understand that is not uncommon. Unfortunately, now, we're in this position trying to just explain our side to the city, and we probably now will have to go to the Department of Liquor License Control and pay our attorney to have this conversation with them, which is just another rock on our sled as a small business trying to move forward. We just feel like it's more overregulation. In fact, we kind of feel like we're being targeted here, knowing how a lot of other similar operations in the state are done, and based on that DLLC's agents' comments about why she's driving this.
Well, we met on March 28th. Anna, Officer Conway, and Risa, who's the agent with the DLLC. We dispersed what the issues were, and she still wanted John on the liquor license as a 0% owner, which doesn't make sense to me. If you're going to be on the license, why would you be down as a 0% owner? That's just a question I don't understand.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Aradona Savage?
Yeah, I got a quick question. And I understand we're talking about the ownership piece of it, but there was also, I think you mentioned three things total, right? One wasn't just the ownership part, the other was about it being a new license, and I kind of missed that. The other one was about an insufficient kitchen. So I don't know if that's something that you can maybe just expand on that just a little bit more with Brigida.
Sure. I conducted a site visit with Officer Conway and DLLC Detective Williams on March 28th. During that site visit, after we discussed the ownership and the business plan, we did a quick tour of the facility, and we were able to see the back kitchen area. And prior to that site visit, two weeks prior, I don't have the exact date, another DLLC detective had met with Jonathan on site, the only person that met him there, and they had toured the facility and discussed as well the requirements that a Series 12 has as far as making sure that your kitchen infrastructure was sufficient to support obtaining a 40% revenue with food and not relying solely on the alcohol. That's what a Series 12 requires. And so he had informed Jonathan that there was a lack of kitchen equipment, as well as the menu was not sufficient, it needed to have more items to support that, to show that they were going to have that revenue ratio.
Well, like, one, that's incorrect. It was Detective Ben Swift who came in.
I'm sorry, Ben Swift. You were right.
Detective that came in, and that is not what he said. What he said was, "My boss does not believe that your submission to the DLLC and the amount of servers that you have on this, or that your menu would be adequate to hit 40%. The kitchen was not a concern." He said, "Oh, this is a Postino-style kitchen." I don't think anyone in this room will debate that they probably hit their targets with a similar structured kitchen. So that was Detective Swift's commentary. I relayed that to Jason. Detective Swift, someone, you're ready, go ahead, resubmit the application to the DLLC, and then let me know that it's been done, and I will relay that to my boss.
Okay. That was not the conversation that I had with Detective, and I, he is correct, I said the wrong detective's name, Detective Swift. And I actually spoke with him again this morning about it. He informed me that he had that discussion with Jonathan about the statements I made, and he gave Jonathan the business card and said that, "Call me if you guys have any questions, but at this point, until that's taken care of, we would be recommending denial on the Series 12 part of it."
Correct. That's absolutely correct. And we understand that.
And then, sorry to interrupt you, sir. The Detective Swift said he never heard from the business again. So.
You have another point?
Yeah. Second one. So during the licensing process, I mentioned, I mentioned that the owner and applicant being unable to demonstrate adherence to the ARS 4-203A and 4-210, and that statute requires the satisfactory showing of the capability, qualifications, and reliability. And the reason I say that is this owner and applicant, Jason, did not make a concerted effort to comply with the multiple deadlines and extensions that were given to him from the city of Tempe and from the Department of Liquor. He did not comply with the requirement to disclose the employee, Jonathan, that we considered a controlling person, not an owner, a controlling person. He failed to adequately communicate the reason they are refusing to disclose this employee, who is identifying himself as an owner and whose responsibilities lead a reasonable person to believe he's a controlling person in the business. They have not efficiently attempted to communicate with Tempe Police or Department of Liquor to work on a solution, reference this requirement. And at the direction of our site visit with Jason on the 28th of March, we indicated that he needed to deactivate the original LLC and adjust or amend the information with Arizona Corporate Commission for the current LLC that the license is under, as well as we discussed the online presence that Jonathan had identifying himself as an owner of the business. And multiple checks of that, I can provide you exact dates, that was not taken care of by the time I gave him his deadline, and it had passed.
We've been given deadlines and demands to say that we haven't made an effort or discussed our concerns or try to work it out, as we would say is more reasonable. We had the conversation with yourself on the phone, and all we were told by Detective Risa Williams was, "You need to do this, or I believe I can go before the board of the Department of Liquor License Control, and I will win this case and have your license revoked." That's what we were told. That doesn't seem like an opportunity to work things out. That seems like a demand, and quite frankly, a threat. And you were on the phone when that occurred, so.
I don't believe that those exact wording, but, but she did say that if you don't disclose Jonathan, then city of Tempe and Department of Liquor will be recommending denial of this application, of this license.
I don't understand disclosing Jonathan. I told you all about Jonathan and how he was my accountant. And we've been transparent in this whole deal.
Yeah. There's nothing new.
There's nothing. I've met with you, met with you guys. We've answered all your questions until you came back and said, "He needs to be on the license as a 0% owner," which is just, I don't get it.
Yeah.
But we've, he's here, we're disclosing everything. We've been completely transparent in this whole process, and now it's being denied. So I understand it's not being denied, but it's a, it's a DLLC thing that is going to be the denial. But to say that we haven't been transparent in this whole process is.
Misleading at best.
It's not true.
I can't speak to the 0% ownership part. I don't know the law or what that is. I know that we requested he be listed as a controlling person. The options for him are to be listed as a controlling person, or a premise manager, or an agent. And so to speak on that, the reason that led me down the path to believe that he was a controlling person, or possibly an owner, was during my background investigation, I found multiple pieces of information pointing to Jonathan identifying himself as an owner. So I had to act in good faith on what was listed on Arizona Corporate Commission. So that was one of the locations that listed him as a member. There were six news articles between the years of 2014 and 2018 where Jonathan was listed in the article as a founder, a co-owner, a partner. And in some of the articles, he's quoted discussing recent construction on the business in 2018. He said, "Trusting Jason with his life and money, being skeptical about joining and starting a craft distillery." There were social media posts with pictures and advertisement for the business or involvement in the business. His biography or work location on Facebook said that he was an owner of Arizona Distilling. The city of Tempe, Jonathan was the one that corresponded with our planning department to set up the grand opening. His LinkedIn profile states he's the owner of Arizona Distilling. He attended meetings with Department of Liquor Detective Swift on his own to talk on the early March. During my correspondence, what they're indicating is transparent, yes, they answered my question, but based on the answer to my question, both DLLC Detective Williams and myself felt that he, he was being a controlling person in the business. So his answers to his responsibility or role in the company in regards to finances is he monitors the finances for a company.
It's an entity on the LLC.
That is a.
I represent and manage an entity, but I am not the person behind the entity, which is.
I'm just quoting what you said, sir. "I monitor the financials for the company that is part owner of this business, and I am a bookkeeper for the entire operation." Then again, in the first email that I asked him about his involvement or ownership in the business, he indicated that he was the son of one of the owners, and that he is not a member but recognized as a managing partner, and it was structured as such by the attorneys whom created the operating agreement. This was done so as I monitor the finances of the business on behalf of this company and need to be recognized as a protective matter. So all of those, all of those sources of information led me to believe that he had a much more involved part in the business and control over business decisions and day-to-day operations than an employee would, a level-line employee. So that is why the Department of Liquor is, that is one of the reasons why the Department of Liquor is requesting that he, I guess, disclose is not appropriate because you have told us that he exists and he's here representing, is basically applying and submitting a questionnaire and fingerprints to the Department of Liquor and to Tempe PD so a background can be conducted. And the reason that is, is the, in compliance with state statute and city ordinances, background checks are conducted to make sure that someone in a position is. checks are conducted to make sure that someone in a position is capable, qualified, and reliable, to make sure that when they run day-to-day operations. And failing to disclose them can potentially be dangerous. It's not only illegal, but it can be dangerous, because when someone has... All right, let me find my thoughts here. When someone is receiving proceeds for the business or controlling the business in some manner, then they have the potential to make good or bad decisions, and that's why these checks are in place, to make sure that a capable, qualified, and reliable person is dealing with this.
Councilmember Adams?
Well, process is very important to me, and you mentioned about missed deadlines. Can you elaborate on that, please? Thank you.
I apologize, because I will have to go over the timeline. So on February 4th, I received the license application from Tax and Licensing. The local governing body has 60 days to process the license and get it back to the Department of Liquor. We're at day 85 now, so we're past our chance. To summarize, Jason was given two continuances for his public hearing, and I can explain why. And then on 4/18 was the deadline after our phone conversation with all four parties to make his decision on whether or not they were going to have Jonathan apply. That deadline passed, and there was no communication.
So, we continued this item twice?
Yes, we've continued this item twice.
This is the third time.
This is the third time. Wait a minute. Anything else? Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, well, it looks pretty straightforward, but I'm just curious, with these deadlines and extensions and everything, what was the reason why you guys could not get the proper...
Giving demands and a timeframe to meet demands, there was no real ability to work it out. Quite frankly, going back to the genesis of this, like they said, a controlling person. If they genuinely had a concern on that front, have they asked once for the operating agreement from this company to see who the controlling members are? Have they ever brought up the fact that there are countless operations in this state similar to ours that have people that are members and owners that they do not require to even put fingerprints on and have an agent in their stead who actually is the person that they go to? That leads us to believe that we're being targeted while we've spoken to two different attorneys, and are here tonight before our attorney unfortunately gets to hit us with a nice retainer and then go have conversations with the Department of Liquor License Control.
But the deadlines, first of all, were for the other members. So the members were for Daniel Costello and Januarius, and the representative is Pam Egan. Once, we had our meeting on March 28th, that's when they sprung John Egan on us, and they wanted those issues. So March 28th was really the genesis of them asking for John Egan's stuff. So the other stuff was for the other two partners, which we were doing the acquisition of control, which was for Daniel Costello and Pam Egan. And then, the one deadline was March 28th, and then April 18th was that other deadline. So the continuance was for the John Egan issue.
I can understand the John, the continuance, if that's how it's going down, but I'm just having a, maybe I'm reading you wrong, but I feel like it's a, how you were approached, you didn't comply. I'm kind of wondering, we run by the same policies, and we have to run by the same legal policies through every owner of any liquor license. So I don't know if we're, I can only trust the system, I guess. And so, if I'm trusting the system, and the system says you have to comply, and you have to present with these items within a timeframe, and if those items are not completed, then I don't know what else to run on. So I'm put in the position of, if we feel that we're doing it legally, you might have a different impression of the approach or whatever, but all we're going to do is deny to Liquor Board, and they're going to make the ultimate decision. And I know that's a pain in the butt, but we're put in this position with the facts that we have in front of us. I wish we didn't have to, I wish, I can only imagine if I was a business owner and I had to like, get all these check marks done, I'm going to get all these check marks done.
Right. And to go back to your comments there, the facts, a lot of these facts are not correct. I mean, this is in your own city agenda that was emailed to us from whoever Mr. Chesterfield is. Again, it goes back to, I'm a member of the LLC. I'm not, they never asked for it.
But you have time to dispute those facts, though. But, I mean...
Which, yeah, we did, and we told them that. And this was weeks ago, this was over the phone, and again, this just came over yesterday. So...
My question's this, telling them that versus, don't you have to go through some administrative disclosure of, "You are not the owner," or "You are this," or "You are that"?
No, no, ask the system. We did, we offered, you know, "Hey, you've never asked for our LLC for this corporation."
There were no, there were no questions about our...
Again, it was basically a deadline and a demand. Do this, or I believe that I can go to the board with my case and get your license revoked. That was it.
And put him on as a 0% owner, which we didn't agree with.
Does that make sense to anybody, as this says, a reasonable person? Is there a reasonable person in this room that thinks a 0% owner is a real thing, or a reasonable thing to make a statement as, or...
I have not been in doing this position for an extended period of time, where I've come across someone saying something about a 0% owner, so I cannot speak to that.
But you know Risa said that.
I believe she said something along that lines, I don't know. But what, but what we did make very clear to you guys is that we considered Jonathan a controlling person, and therefore he had to apply, fill out a questionnaire, and submit fingerprints.
But why would you consider him a controlling person? Because of articles?
Because, yes, sir. Because of articles, because of open source information that he is identifying himself on his online presence as an owner, he's on the Corporation Commission, he's promoting, he's, then he could have been disclosed as a premise manager, too. A controlling person, he's a...
We were never given that as an option, until now. Premise manager, the first I've ever heard that is right now.
I'm not sure if that's an option, that's something I'd have to check with the Department of Liquor about.
Okay. Vice, or Councilmember Adana Savage?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, really quick. You know, I'm kind of like with Councilmember Navarro, I mean, I think this is just a really unfortunate situation. I've been on this council for a really long time, and in the sense that I know that our employees, our staff do not take this lightly. And I will say, I bet you, we've denied maybe three or four liquor licenses since I've even been on the council, which is nine years. So it's one of those things that doesn't happen very often, and I know they do very thorough work, and I appreciate the homework, and the resources and the research that has been done here, and I certainly understand. And it goes to, if I saw any articles or any information about you being the owner, then I would assume that you're the owner, period. And that's just one of the issues. So that's not the only thing, we seem to be stuck on that. But I think with that said, with the two continuances, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation to denial, the Series liquor license.
Second. There's been a motion to deny the liquor license, and there's been a second by Councilmember Keating. Any other further discussion?
For clarification, is that both for Agenda Item 5A7 and 5A8? Thank you.
There's been a recommendation to deny items 5A7 and 5A8. It's been seconded by Councilmember Keating. Any discussion, please vote. That motion carries 6 to 0.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is our non-consent agenda. All the non-consent agenda items will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for an introduction and first public hearing will be heard, but will not be voted upon this evening. Agenda items scheduled for a second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Item 5A, 6A1 is to award a two-year contract with three one-year renewal options to Express Scripts Incorporated, who will provide pharmacy benefits, management services for eligible city employees and their dependents to be administered by the Human Resources Division. Is there any comments or discussion from the council? Is there a motion on item 6A1?
Yes.
It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. That motion carries 6 to 0. Next is, next section of our non-consent agenda is our ordinances, items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no vote will be taken. The second hearing of these items will be scheduled for May 9, 2019. Ordinance and items for introduction and first hearing, item 6B1, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a portion of the sanitary sewer easement located in a planned area development at 1135 East Apache Boulevard, also being the southwest corner of Apache Boulevard and Terrace Road. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for May 9, 2019. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none. Any comments or discussion from the council? Next is item 6B2, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a portion of the sanitary sewer easement located in a planned area development at 1321 South Terrace Road, also being the southwest east corner of Apache Boulevard and Terrace Road. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for May 9, 2019. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this item? It is a public hearing item. Seeing none. Is there any comments or discussion from the council? Next is item 6B3, to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a portion of two waterline easements located at 1050 West Elliott Road, near the northwest corner of Hardy Drive and Elliott Road. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for May 9, 2019. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to discuss item 6B3? Could you please get my attention? Close that public hearing. Is there any comments or discussion? Seeing none. Next, the next section of our non-consent agenda is items scheduled for a second public hearing and final adoption. The only item under this section is 6E1. However, this item is being continued to May 9, 2019, the regular council meeting at the request of staff to allow for the expiration of the public comment period based on the receipt of the final funding allocation received from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. With that, I move on to current events and council announcements. Start with Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tomorrow night is Music Under the Stars at Tempe Diablo Stadium. It starts at 7:00 PM. It's your opportunity to listen to young Tempe musicians performing various musical instruments. So come on out and enjoy the evening under the stars. The second announcement I have, we have, we have, there, there, yeah, okay, good, is Tempe Pre. Tempe Pre K Program will be drawing names for available seats tomorrow by 5:00 PM. So please submit your application if you're interested in Tempe Pre, and/or if you need financial assistance with tuition. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, Q B.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my event, which is office hours at the library, lasts Saturday of the month from 1:00 to 4:00, and this is a special Earth Month edition. So we'll be meeting downstairs in the Meeting Room B. We're going to hear from staff with updates about our sustainability program and initiatives, and would urge you to come, attend. You can drop in, but the actual presentation will be the first hour. So hope to see you on Saturday.
Okay. Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to, I hope I didn't have any announcements, but I just wanted to thank Brigida for her time here with the city. All I can say is, with my experience here, you've been nothing but professional, you've been enjoyable, but the biggest thing is you've done a variety of things to make the city more innovative, and you've made your department, with little funds and lack of staff, and we know what you had in resources, but you really did make a tremendous difference. It's well noted, it's well appreciated, and everything you've done has been just spot-on. So I can only say thank you, you know, from bottom of my heart. I know you'd be leaving, but I can always yell at you across the way from the alley just to make sure you're okay, and want to come over for a beer now. Have fun.
Councilmember Adana Savage?
Thank you, Mayor. BK, I am going to dedicate this 20 minutes to you. Are you ready? You know, I know, Councilmember Navarro, Joel already said a lot of things, but I got to tell you, so I can truly say this, because we came in right at the same time, in the same year, so I know no other clerk. So in my eyes, Brigida is it. She is the best clerk ever known that I know. So, anyway. BK, I got to say that you are definitely the ultimate professional. I mean, just an inspiration, just been really wonderful to work with. I mean, you're always keeping us straight, on line, and really have done some really innovative things in the department, especially knowing, you know, how scarce resources have been. You've always seemed to do more with less, and it's really pretty dang amazing, and you never cease to amaze us with what you've been able to accomplish, and how far you've been able to bring us. And, you know, I think we have to contribute where we are today, and these iPads that we're using now, and the way that we utilize them, to you, you know? And for you and the team that you've surrounded yourself with, it's been pretty remarkable. And I know you've left the clerk's office in a really great position for Carla, we're excited to have her, and really looking forward to it. But BK, I can say the same thing, you know, you're just right down the street, right? So we do kind of live in the same hood, and I hope to see you many more times, and maybe we'll go over to Joel's and make him buy. I think that's where you go. Thank you for everything. Ultimately awesome person.
Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to echo what I've heard, you know, we have only been here for just a little bit over three years, and, you know, I found you to be nothing but professional and very competent, and, you know, if it wasn't for you, I probably never would have got my campaign finance reports in on time. So I'm hoping that Carla can, you know, make sure to let her know that I need to remind her. You know, I really appreciate everything you've done for the city, and, you know, obviously your legacy will carry on for a long time, and I wish you all the best in your next endeavors, and we're rooting for you for sure. And, you know, as long as Joel's buying, I'm going to invite myself as well.
Big guy's chest.
Yeah, okay, there we go. All right, great. Good luck to you, and thank you.
All right, I'm going to, I've been asked to allow my other colleagues that want to say something about Brigida. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, yes. Brigida has been so helpful for my transition into the office, and also for my computer challenges. She always is able to solve them, and I will really miss seeing you, and I know that Carla will take over and do a great job. But we do know where to find you, and apparently Joel's buying. So thanks so much for, thanks so much for everything that you've done for the City of Tempe, and we appreciate your services. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Not to repeat everyone, so I'll talk about something different, but you were at the fulcrum of designing and implementing and championing a lot of our campaign finance reform efforts. And you took our campaign finance reporting system, it was online before, but you made it searchable. And we designed a lobbyist registry, and you made, that was a complicated effort, and you made that easy and searchable and more transparent. So you contributed to efforts in the city that have made our government so much more accessible to people, so much more transparent and democratic. So thank you for all the innovation that you brought to that, to the campaign finance reform for the City of Tempe, and I'll miss you so much personally. Thank you.
All right, with that, Brigida, I said a lot yesterday at your event that we had for you. I can't thank you enough. You've been an amazing addition to the City of Tempe. We are a better city because of your leadership and your expertise. I'm personally going to miss you. I don't want to see your colleague, but I can see your friend. And Gil, I don't know what you have in store for you, but I'm going to tell you, the way she organized around here, watch out at home, she'll have all kinds of time, Gil.
He's working all the time.
I know. And I got to tell you, Gil, I really want to thank Gil for sharing Brigida with us. I know it hasn't been the easiest considering some of the things that you had to go through, and I just want you to know that, I know Gil's your family, and you have a great family, and you had a lot of great friends that came to see you from out of town, which really speaks volumes, but from all of us on the city council and our residents, I thank you so much for what you have done. You're really going to be missed. And Carla, I'm excited to work with you. I know you're going to, you've got big shoes to fill, I think you know that, but I think you're up to the challenge, otherwise you wouldn't be here. So I look forward to continuing to work with you, as well as I have with Brigida and the rest of the staff. So Brigida, thank you so much, and I know, I'm going to give you a little bit of time.
Thank you. I was going to ask for time tonight. I want to take this opportunity to thank you as the council, not only for hiring me, but giving me the opportunity to stay here for eight years, almost nine. It's been wonderful to be a part of this community. We will remain a part of this community even though I'm retiring, and I just want to say thank you. Also, thank you to the city clerk's office staff, because they have certainly helped me be the leader that I am here in Tempe, and I know even though I'm retiring, they will continue on, and this city clerk's office will be one of the best in the state. So I just want to say thank you. And also thank you to my husband, who is here for his first council meeting. He watches me on television, but now he came to this meeting, so thank you.
All right, congratulations. I also want to mention, this weekend, we had the Pat Tillman Run on Saturday at Sun Devil Stadium. So hopefully you guys are out there ready to run. We're not going to be able to compete with the ultra marathoner in Henry Ward, but I will tell you, it's a good, it's a great cause. Hopefully see everyone out there, just be mindful of the traffic restrictions. With that, next item on our agenda is public appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed on this agenda. Matters discussed by the public during public appearances cannot be discussed by the city council unless they are specifically listed on this agenda. There is a three-minute time limit for speakers. Speakers' visual aids and recorded tapes are not allowed. Members of the public shall refrain from making any personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, and from becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or while attending this meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audiences, clapping, stomping of feet, yelling, or any others, similar demonstrations are also prohibited, and violations of these rules will result in the removal of the city council chambers and meeting. Item 8A is our scheduled public appearances. We do have one, Mr. Michael Bieber. Please come forward, state your name and place of reference, or your residence, yeah, place of residency.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. From Mesa again, thank you for inviting me back, or letting myself invite myself back, put it that way. I wanted to be asked, I wanted to ask to be on the agenda so that you would have permission to follow parliamentary procedure and respond or ask questions of me, so that's why I asked. I've met with several law enforcement leaders and council members from both Mesa and Tempe over the past several times, several in here. I thank you for that. And to a person, their heart has been good, and I find that incredibly important to me. So, which brings me to, to a quote by Mark Twain. "There's a difference between governments and individuals. Governments don't care, individuals do." That's a kind of a blanket statement, but we have to be on guard for that, if we believe Mark Twain at all. So with that in mind, for my points that I'm going to bring up is, is we need to, I'd like you to think about an incident that looks a lot like Antonio R.S.A.'s incident, by way of example, but not by a way of specifics. I want to give you the freedom to step back from that case, so you'd have some freedom to talk. In business, every crisis that resulted in a major incident involved people, processes, and leadership. And I worked for a multinational that had, for 34 years, at 1,500 plants, I was responsible for their safety. I had 165,000 people, things can go wrong, and they did. We found the best way to handle an incident when they happened was to have transparency with the community at large and with those that were impacted. To communicate, then communicate again, and then over-communicate. And, third, sorry, bear with me, have timely action. Take action. Do something about it to prevent whatever was negative about that incident, because we're talking about incidents, crises, so that it can't happen again. We always looked at things from three fronts, three lenses. I suspect part of this exists today in government in the city of Tempe, and I know it does in part in the city of Mesa. One, three lenses. One, were any laws broken? And in business, that included regulations, because we're governed by regulations, be it OSHA, be it whatever. Were any of those broken? If it was a serious incident. Two, and we used law enfor-
I know we're going to be meeting tomorrow.
Yes.
So we can-
Can I ask for three more minutes to comment on my own comment?
I can't, because it's a schedule, and we have a three-minute time limit.
Okay. Can I finish one sentence?
What's that? Okay, go ahead, finish, I'll give you another minute.
Okay, thank you. So were procedures broken? We always involve law enforcement or technical officials, OSHA, whoever, if we needed to. Two, were any policy and procedures or violated or insubordination issues taking place? We always involve subject matter experts that knew and wrote policy and understood policy. Three, was the outcome, and this is the most important one and one I want to talk to you about, was the outcome consistent with our values and our culture? It's an incident, so of course, in a fashion, it's not. But if you look at it and give it the acid test, was it consistent with what we want to stand in front of our God, in front of our community, in front of our stockholders, be it private company, and be represented by? That's my challenge to cut it off, is to you. When you look at a case that looks like Antonio R.S.A., a 14-year-old that's shot in the back running away, is that what we want to be as a community of Mesa and Tempe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Three minutes is very much time.
Thank you.
You can comment, though, can't you?
Next speaker, under unscheduled public appearances, I have Mr. Darian Barrett.
How's it going, Mayor? I'm Darian from the city of Tempe. I want to first of all say thank you for meeting with me the other day. I really do appreciate that. I'm out here to, once again, bring light to the Antonio R.S.A. case. We're not as strong as we were once before in numbers this time around, but if we continue to show up, you know, the message continues to go through your mind. I'm also here to speak on the interactions the police have with our community. As you know, you guys just held a lot of rewards for the students on the First Amendment rights. Your First Amendment right is freedom of speech, the freedom of press, like what I'm doing right now, and that allows you to, you know, film the public officials, your law enforcement, and it's actually highly suggested by the Supreme Court to film the police officers. It is a violation of our First Amendment right when we are out filming and an officer goes out of his way to pull his flashlight out and shine it in a camera. I want you to take note of this as well, Sylvia, because I know you're the one that could make this change. Pretty much, the way these officers react with us, there's times, you know, that they are super cool, but the, when we come out with cameras, some of them seem intimidated. Some of them respect that we have the right to film, some of them don't even acknowledge the camera, you know? It is our right to film. These officers should not be obstructing the camera view, that's a violation of your First Amendment. They should not be using a flashlight, and because, Ms. Sylvia, you as well know that these flashlights are strong enough to cause eye damage and permanent eye damage, and these officers continue to use, I'm not going to say continue, because they just did it their first time this past weekend, and I'm not going to give these officers names, because I have some respect, but the strobe is a, it's a fast blinking light, and they are shining it right at our cameras and right in our faces. That could cause permanent retina damage and eye damage. I want you to be able to talk to your officers on the bike squad and all the other officers in your department, and let them know that we have the right to film these officers, that they should not be obstructing our camera view, we should not be being blinded by a flashlight that could cause blind, you know, to be blind. And just the other day, there is actually something going, is it helping?
Yeah, I got to keep that, thank you, though. All right, the next speaker is Nico.
Nico, Tempe. I'm going to share from the policy demands for structural change in the institutional violence of Tempe, put together by a coalition of community members who are against police brutality. I know a copy was shared with you, so I'm going to have a few sections of that that I'll be repeating back to you today. So transparency, transparency is critical for upholding democracy. Without it, we cannot be sustainable as a community. We need transparency, or else the institution loses its legitimacy and the public's eye. So again, I'm here with my community to continue to demand justice for Antonio R.S.A. and for killer cops to be held accountable. As we continue to call out the corrupt systems that allow for a child to be shot directly in the back while fleeing, and why we should continue to be critical of a system which allows for brown and black kids to be murdered where their killers avoid accountability. Last time Tempe Police's violence and racial discrimination statistics were revealed to the public in 2014, Tempe was more racist than Ferguson. Despite a surface change in leadership, the public has yet to be updated on any differences. So we demand the officer manual and contract, the statistics to be updated, officer badge numbers to be revealed after a shooting, discipline records to be made public, and for the footage of a murder to be revealed, not be revealed to the media without prior and informed consent from families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Curtis Wood.
My name is Curtis Wood, I'm resident of Tempe. And in full disclosure, I volunteer one day a week with the Tempe Police Department, driving a motorized services vehicle, helping people at accident scenes and stuff. I'm also the board treasurer of the Tempe Police Foundation, and I just wanted to remind the council that I think the population of Tempe is about 181,000 plus, something in that range, maybe in 2017. On any given day, there's probably 181,000-plus people who don't interact with the police force, and it's probably because they go to work and they don't engage in criminal activity and other things like that. So I think a lot of this hype over this issue is kind of overstated, and I would remind the council that, you know, we represent all the people in Tempe, and like I said, many of them go years without any kind of interaction with the police, which is unfortunate, because then that means the sworn police officers' interaction with the public is generally pretty negative. I don't have to deal with that, because I'm ordered to stay away from those kind of calls and so forth. And I feel one, I'm really glad that we've got a couple of guys out here, you know, they're willing to, you know, put on, say, what do you call them? Bullet resistant, that's not bulletproof. I was corrected by a sergeant a couple of months ago when I was doing a tour at the Hardy substation, but they're not bulletproof, they're bullet resistant. And these people, they're getting cars, they're getting accidents rushing to scenes to help their fellow officers and so forth. And so just keep that in mind that, you know, rather than getting all this hype and so forth, that, you know, there's a lot of people that support the police out there, and that's it, that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, that's all the cards I have. With that, we are adjourned.